Coming up next on ECN, a regularly scheduled meeting of the Edinburgh City Council. On the council, Mayor Ramiro Garza Jr., Mayor Pro Tem Daniel Dan Diaz, Councilmember Jason Velion, Councilmember David Salazar Jr., and Councilmember David White. Sitting in as advisors, City Manager Myra Ayala and City Attorney Omar Ochoa. And now, live from Edinburgh City Hall, the Edinburgh City Council.
All right, good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock. We're gonna begin this meeting of our Edinburgh City Council. Happy New Year to everyone. We have visibly, I see, we have a quorum at this time. And we're gonna start with the first item, which is a prayer. And we have this evening our pastor, Dr. David Alexander from First Baptist Church, is gonna lead us in prayer today. Rabbi, could please stand?
The council officials, fellow residents, Happy New Year to you. Father, thank you so much for a new year. Fresh start, fresh ideas, with a lot of just ongoing things going on. Lord, we just thank you for another opportunity. Thank you for your guidance. Lord, we'd like to remember this evening those in Japan. And, or that you would just guide the disaster relief efforts that are going on there. We continue to remember those there in Ukraine and those that are in Israel. Lord, we pray that you would bring peace and justice in those situations according to your will and in your glory. Where it's a small world and these things are those far away, and we know that they affect us to some degree. Father, this evening, pray that your presence will be here, that you continue to guide our council in wisdom and citizens who offer opinion and counsel. Lord, just allow us to continue to be stewards of the things which you've entrusted us with. To your honor and glory, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Alexander. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. We're gonna move on to item two, certification of public notice.
Yes, sir, Mayor. The meeting was postponed according to the Texas Open Meetings Act on December 28, 2023, at 8:15 PM, sir.
Thank you. Item three is disclosure of conflict of interest?
Yes, sir. Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a council member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. If there is a conflict of interest, the council member can't participate or vote on the item. Are there any conflicts to disclose?
No, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Move on to City Manager's report.
Hi, yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to take this opportunity to inform the public that the City of Edinburgh is launching a new customer service initiative that we will be implementing starting this week. We are asking the public to officially give us their feedback. There is now a customer service survey, which was created by Mr. Danny Veda, our Director of Information Technology, to receive input from the customers that we serve. The survey, for the most part, is anonymous. However, we will also be launching a new city newsletter. And we will ask if they would like to receive a digital version, so they will need to provide an email address, you know, when they complete that survey. There will be a flyer, and I believe you might have a flyer in your desk area. There will be a flyer with a QR code that will be displayed at all customer service windows at every department on the kiosk located here at the City Hall entrance. And it will be available on the city's website at www.cityofedinburg.com/survey. Our 3-1-1 Center, which is overseen by Mr. Veda as well, will be evaluating the survey results and provide a report to city management to review and assess the results, to either continue and elaborate on what is working for our customers and/or take the opportunity to implement new processes for what may need improvement. So I just wanted to inform the mayor, the council, and the community that we will have this survey available, and we would really appreciate their feedback. Do you have any questions?
No, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no other reports, I will move on to item five, proclamations. We have a proclamation this evening recognizing Ms. Cassandra Pedrassa for winning a $10,000 scholarship at the San Antonio Livestock Show Western Art Contest. And I believe we have her here present with us, with her family. Please come up to the podium. I have a proclamation here we're gonna read in your name. It's Cassandra Elise, right?
Yes.
Okay. Pedrassa, Western Art Show and Contest Class Champion. Whereas Cassandra Pedrassa was born to Laura Iris Pedrassa and Gabriel Pedrassa on April 27, 2007. Whereas Ms. Pedrassa was encouraged by her mother to draw and paint, she enrolled her in art camps. But she developed greater skills when she took art in sixth grade at Elias Longoria Middle School, where, under the direction of art teacher Amanda Munoz, Ms. Pedrassa earned the title Junior Base Category 2D Medalist. And whereas in seventh grade, still under the direction of Ms. Munoz, Ms. Pedrassa once again earned the title Junior Base Category 2D Medalist, adding this celebrating artist book publication winner. And whereas in 2020, while in the eighth grade, she won the grade Junior Base Category 2D Medalist and the Base Category 2D Medalist and Platinum Selection. And whereas freshman year, under the direction of Ms. Gabriela Gonzalez, Ms. Pedrassa was awarded Ninth Grade High School Base Award State Qualifier and State 2D Medalist and Rural Grand Valley Birding Festival Art Contest Finalist. And whereas in her sophomore year, Ms. Pedrassa, under the direction of art teacher Manuel Sines, she was once again named Base 2D Regional Medalist. And whereas in 2023, taking Art III under the direction of Ms. Gabriela Gonzalez, Cassandra entered into the Hacienda Ford Exhibition Dia de los Muertos. And whereas Ms. Cassandra Pedrassa, Edinburgh North High School student, entered the San Antonio Western Art Show and Contest and won the class champion for her pastel drawing, earning a $10,000 scholarship. It was the first time Edinburgh North High School competed in this very prestigious event. And whereas the Edinburgh City Council is proud to recognize the achievements of Cassandra Pedrassa and wish her success in her future endeavors. Now therefore, I, Ramiro Garza Jr., Mayor of the City of Edinburgh, Texas, by the power of estatal legal law, do hereby recognize Cassandra Elise Pedrassa, a talented student artist, for her achievements and phenomenal performance. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So you can't leave the podium without telling us your comments. So I'm sorry. I should have said that in the beginning. And you could recognize your family and whoever's here. I apologize. That's on me.
It's okay.
Okay, I should have said that in the beginning, so.
Okay.
But tell us a little bit about it. Congratulations. You know, this is amazing. And, you know, we're very, very proud of your recognition and what you've honored, been honored with.
Yes, so I would like to thank my art teacher, Ms. Gonzalez, and my family. They all supported me a lot during this time. And, you know, in class, she's always pushing me. And I put in the hours during class, sometimes after school, whenever I can. And just my inspiration was for it was, that's little girl. I would go to the ranch. My grandpa, he's here today. And I'd spend a lot of time out there with the horses. I liked the horses a lot. So I just made like tribution to the horses at the ranch. And I took pictures of different eyes of the horses. And I just included that all in one. And that was how it came to be.
Awesome.
Great job.
Great job. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And here with your parents. You wanna introduce who you're here with? I know you've kinda did a shout out to your grandpa and others, but just to make sure everybody's recognized that's here with you, your support.
I'm here with my mom, Laura Pedrassa, my sister, Leila Pedrassa, my dad, Gabe Pedrassa, and Ms. Gabby Gonzalez.
Great. Well, congratulations. And parents, congratulations to you all. And Edinburgh North, the first time, and this is amazing. And I know your future's bright with just this recognition. You're gonna go on and do some amazing things, but just about anything you'd like to do. And we're very proud on behalf of myself and the city council. Congratulations. And, you know, we wish you all the very best in your bright future ahead.
Thank you.
I just wanna say thank you for putting Edinburgh on the map in a positive light. Thank you for submitting, and thank you to all her support system. Congratulations to everyone.
Thank you.
Hey, invite your grandparents. Take a picture with us. Come on down. Sound like they're a big part.
Congratulations. This is for you. Congratulations. Congratulations again. Congratulations.
This is not lucky. This is earned. So you earned it.
Congratulations. I wanna see the picture. Congratulations.
All right, we're gonna move on to item six, public comments.
Yes, sir, Mayor. The Edinburgh City Council allows for a specific portion of the city council meeting to be dedicated to public comments. Public comments are limited to three minutes. I will be taking time. Please note, the public comment period is not interactive. The council may not respond to public comments. At this time, Mayor and council, I have one public comment from Ms. Fern McClarity. And she would also like to comment on an agenda item that is in executive session, item 12A.
Councilmembers, it is my understanding that the Edinburgh City Council has purchased the HEB soccer facility. I think that the community needs a financial explanation for this action. How is the purchase of a failing soccer field going to benefit the residents of Edinburgh? I would like to remind you that the people you represent are facing significant problems paying their property taxes, they're buying food and paying their utilities. We are no longer listening to what you're saying about transparency, but rather looking at what you are doing, which is increasing our debt. Earlier this year, 83% of the people voted to use state funds to lower our property taxes. All the benefits of this action are gone because this council and other elected officials voted to keep the same people on the appraisal district board. Homestead owners were supposed to get an additional $60,000 reduction in their property values. But instead, the appraisal districts simply increased the values, and we will receive no benefit from our effort to lower taxes. Do you understand what I'm saying? The people of Texas are trying to help, but our elected officials, by increasing our values, have nullified that action. Now you're telling us that you're buying a failing soccer facility will improve the economy by creating jobs. This is not rocket science. We have seen it before. The community purchased a sports arena and supported facilities for $93 million. This does not include another $10 million in street and drainage improvement. This community is heavily invested in this project, and what are we getting? The city receives $250,000 annually from the arena, I believe. And we pay out $1.3 million for the bonds. How does this benefit a city with 30% of its population living in poverty? The answer is that it does not, but it does benefit each of you. What you must remember is that the same deal you make for this soccer field was made for the sports arena. And that board, none of you are on that board. They're all gone. So I'd like to know how much have the people from Edinburgh benefited from that deal? And I also have signed up for 12A, which I know is in closed session. And my thing is, what is the city and how much will this cost the citizens of Edinburgh? DHR tried several years ago to get $7 million for a parking lot west of the hospital. I thanked that board at the time. They said no. And also, once the city owns this property, this soccer field, you must go for bids. The city must follow the law. I can't wait to see tonight because this is consultation with city attorney and possible action regarding economic development agreement with Doctors Hospital at Renaissance. Once again, we would like to know what's going on. Every time we turn around, it costs the taxpayers. You're sitting in those seats. It's your responsibility.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Do we have any other public comments?
No, sir.
All right, we're gonna move on to item seven, presentation reports. Presentation regarding the Edinburgh Downtown District.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Mr. Planning and Zoning Director. Tonight, I wanted to give a short presentation on Edinburgh's Downtown District. Like many Texas County seats, downtown Edinburgh is designed around a courthouse square that is accessed off two main thoroughfares, those thoroughfares being Klosner and University Drive. The following exhibit here on the presentation depicts the areas that are shaded in green as those being the downtown district in Edinburgh. The concept here is that we go two blocks north of University Drive and then two blocks south of University Drive. So on the north side, we go up to Coon. And then on the south side, we go up to Mall. To the east, we go up to Veterans. And then on the west side, we go up to Fifth Avenue, which borders the university. Along Klosner, we do go about one or two blocks further than the boundaries that are previously mentioned. The Unified Development Code does designate...
Hi, Mayor, real quick. I'm sorry. So that depicts what we currently have in our Unified Development Code right now?
Yes, this is what the Unified Development Code has, and it's also...
Far as the designated downtown?
Correct.
Got it. Sorry, I just...
Now, the UDC does give us the latitude to expand that, should we want to.
But this is right now like an exhibit to the...
Current time, yes.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
So this is what's allowed in the downtown district as per the Unified Development Code. This district is only for Edinburgh's historical downtown square and its immediate environment. It is intended to permit a range of commercial and high-density residential uses that create a pedestrian-oriented downtown that will serve as a civic and cultural heart of the city for generations. Vertical mixed-use developments with retail, restaurant, and entertainment uses on the ground floor and offices or residential uses on the upper floors is encouraged. This district is not appropriate or warranted in any other location other than the historic downtown square and its immediate environments and should not be applied in other areas, except for expansions, as I mentioned. Those expansions need to be approved by the city council. So this picture shows changes that we've seen to the downtown district. And I believe we have Mr. Nick Cantu here, who has developed the Society 204 building there in the center picture. Other pictures that I took are those of the offices of Terry Canales and then some here on Cano Street. But most of the pictures depict modern buildings. We don't have a historical district per se. Other cities do have a historical district. We do have a couple of buildings in town, like the Chamber of Commerce and the Auditorium here in our City Hall, that are registered as historical buildings. But there are not too many because there's not a Historical Commission within the City of Edinburgh. And I will also say that it's also expensive to renovate buildings following the guidelines of the Historical Commission because you gotta use certain colors, certain materials. You gotta make it or leave it looking as it did back in the day when it was first erected. So these are some of the considerations that we have for new businesses. If you're constructing or remodeling a building in the downtown district, it's considered to be grandfathered, and you're not gonna be required to have more parking than is already provided on site. So that's just one of the provisions that we have for those that are investing in our downtown areas.
And once again, that's part of our Unified Development Code that we have in place.
It's part of our UDC, yes. Most of the parking is just off-street parking. However, most of the little buildings or some of the commercials have parking in the back or on-site. So it's not like they don't have any parking. These are new projects that the city has done in the area. Most of the construction that the city has done has been in the McIntyre area, the Edinburgh Arts Cultural and Event Center, and the Promenade Park. The Promenade Park is already ready. The event centers should be ready in the next couple of months. And then I also did a couple of inquiries with our other cities in the valley and then other cities in the state of Texas. Downtown Harlingen, for example, has the Jackson Street, where they have the market days. They also recently restored the Reese Building. This one was restored following the guidelines of the Historical Commission. And Mission, Texas, another local town, has a downtown street light and brick paver project where they installed old-fashioned-looking lights and benches and brick pavers along Conway. The Rio Theater is also recently renovated, as was the Leo Peña Placita Park. And of course, you have the Tom Landry mural in the city of Mission. Downtown Farr, this is a city project. They installed a hub food park, a food truck park, I'm sorry. And it is a city-funded project. They also did some lighting and arches over the main streets in front of their city hall there. And they also did some fountains on the north side and south side of the city hall facility. So the focus again was mainly in the downtown area. Downtown Brownsville has a downtown market square. They also have a battlefield trail that leads to the market square. And there's also a lot of historical downtown buildings that have been renovated using historical guidelines. I also looked at Denton, Texas. And why Denton? Because they have two universities. They have the Texas Women's University and North Central Texas College. They also have a courthouse in their downtown area. And their population, a little bit larger than Edinburgh, but not too far off. But they also have a great focus in the downtown area, as can be seen there in some of the pictures. And then Athens, Georgia, this is the town where the University of Georgia is located. They have a downtown historic district. And they have a College Avenue, which is similar to University Drive. And their motto is "Something for Everyone to Do." So what's in store for the future here in Edinburgh for 2024 and beyond? I think if our growth is gonna happen, it's gonna happen towards the university side, expanding westward. And there was a conceptual that was done in the 2010 downtown master plan that shows the bookstore area being renovated. But all that area north of the bookstore, just east of Fifth Street and Fourth Street, is currently vacant. So I think if anything develops, it would be in that general area. And then the APA, the American Planning Association, lists the following areas as great places in the state of Texas. And as you can see, there almost every one of them focuses in the downtown area. So one of the things that I would like to do is work with the UTRGV planning to see what ideas they have and possibly work on updating our downtown master plan. But I think if we work together with the university, we can focus on this corridor that's here just west of City Hall and between City Hall and Fifth Street and come up with something good for the future. I wanna mention that Nick Kalind, Nick from the Society 204 is here in the audience. He's done a great job there with the renovation of that building. And now he's working on the Citrus Theater as well.
Let me ask you.
Go ahead, sir.
The promenade, this is what you're talking about, the area?
Yes.
West of here is the prom, what they call the promenade. Didn't it have a project already laid out, or not a project already laid? I mean, this was a vision. The continuation of the vision that they had in the past is what we need to pick up? Or take that same area and turn it into our own? Is that what you're referring to?
That's what I'm referring to. I mean, the university is, we've seen a lot of growth within the university. They've done, they've done a lot of expansion, but they haven't focused on the existing. So this is an area I think that they can focus on. And I think together with the city, we can come up with some good plans for the future.
Yeah, I show Chief, their downtown master plan from 2010 is on there. A lot of familiar names. I think Danny, you're still on there, but you were doing websites, and now you're director. I actually was joking with the mayor. It's one of the names I saw there. So just to add on to what Chief's talking about, there was a downtown master plan finalized in 2010. And a lot of the improvements we've done now is kind of following that. Of course, the big difference from 2010 to now, right? And I just think we need to use all the stakeholders that are already in the area. And like you said, I mean, incorporate UTRGV with the Division One football coming. Athens, Georgia, I'm glad to see that because I've heard from the mayor and others that Athens, Georgia is a perfect example of what our downtown can look like with football coming into town. And we've had a lot of priorities. We focused on a lot of things. I've been in office two years, and I tell everyone we've just been trying to steer the ship the right way and fix some things, and now it's time to kind of move forward. There'll be a lot of great announcements this year. This is one of the things that I'm glad that the mayor brought up and made it part of our priorities because we do need to focus on downtown. And with all the things that are coming, it's time to develop it. And I think we're gonna discuss some sort of a board or what? You wanna add to that maybe, Mayor?
Well, I wanted to hear from City Magic, because, you know, we asked this to be on the agenda because we wanna get moving on, you know, we've been talking about a lot of different things, like you're mentioning, and downtown is a priority. But unless we have a focused approach, right, in our downtown, meaning have its own designated...
Committee.
Committee or, you know, focused area, it's gonna be tough. The city has, obviously, there's a lot that happens in the city. And there has been plans done in the past. And but, and if we're gonna update that, you know, who's gonna implement it? And we have some great stakeholders right now here that are working a lot of different things. And I think we need to see how we can work closer together.
Yes, sir.
But I'd like to see if administration can help us come up with how we can, you know, looking at other areas, other cities, there's no sense of reinventing the wheel. I mean, there's so many wonderful downtowns out there. But I feel like it needs its own, you know, dedicated...
Staff and committee and, yes, sir.
Correct, correct. So, you know, I just, I wanted to have this on here, start the dialogue and get some ideas going. There is a lot that is gonna be happening. I've got some calls in this corridor here of some potential improvements. But, you know, we ought to update this plan and work together with, I know you mentioned, Hi-Me. Well, let's revisit this, but I don't wanna do it without, for example, the stakeholders. Like, we need to include them in this discussion as we're looking at it too. Because we're a stakeholder too. City Hall's right here in the middle, you know, McIntyre. And so is the university, but so is a lot of other, including the county and including our school district. And so I just, you know, wanna make sure that, first of all, the council, if everybody's in the same page, you know, we really do need to focus our efforts. We do need to create a board, like a downtown district, and have some members, stakeholders, serve on it that can help guide us together with what we're trying to do.
We can certainly do that, Mayor. At the next city council meeting, we can, we presented this item before you so that you, that open, we can have that open dialogue and to get the feedback from the council so that we can know what we need to do on our end to move forward. Certainly have designated staff, create a committee, you know, through form of a resolution ordinance. And that way, we can start setting the goals and the implementation, the budgetary process as well. See what we need to do and start inviting all the stakeholders to start having that open dialogue with them as well, to see what their vision is as well, so that we can incorporate it into what we would like to see the downtown become. I know that, you know, Hi-Me did start looking into what other cities are doing. So like the mayor said, you know, why reinvent the wheel? Let's take a look at what's been working in other areas and then expand on those ideas and those processes so that we can start looking to see what we can start doing here in our own downtown district.
Yeah, one of the first things is, for example, this map, like, should this, right now, that's part of the UDC? Because at that time, I guess it was defined as, all right, this is what's gonna be our downtown.
Yeah.
That board or committee, I'd like, first thing, first order of business is evaluating that. Like, let's look at that, but then also look at other things. And Nick, I don't wanna put you on the spot here, but, you know, this is an opportunity. We've talked about some other things, our alleyways, right? What can we do with them?
Correct.
Can we, and what ordinance is, or what do we need to change, you know, of what we have in place so that, you know, we allow or work with folks that are trying to do certain things with those buildings? Because right now, we have the UDC, and it's kind of defined the way it is. But how can we change it to allow entrepreneurs to do their thing, you know? And for us, you know, help support on the public side, on the public improvements, the things that we can.
Correct.
And there's so many tools out there. I mean, some of these cities you have on here, I mean, they use tax income reinvestment zones. They use so many things. And, but I don't wanna go out and designate the downtown a TURS without having a plan. We don't, what are we gonna do with the TURS?
Costs, yeah.
What, you know, but we have some great things coming up. We have a parking garage gonna be built. We have, I mean, TechSod that's doing all those improvements to 107. And we need to, we need to get on board to get something going so that we're better prepared, you know, to have capitalized, not only on those improvements, but also what stakeholders are doing as well, and how we can coordinate it together, you know, as part of an overall improvement plan for our downtown. And how we can coordinate it together, you know, as part of an overall improvement plan for downtown.
Yeah, I agree, and I invite the public to get online and look at the master plan from 2010. And with all the synergy of all the things happening with the Tech dot, with the football coming in, some of that has to be revamped and upgraded. Because if you read it, it talks a lot about slowing traffic around the square, and I was reading there even some medians, and, you know, certain miles per hour residences where there, you have people that'll walk the area. So I just think that with Tech dot, football, all the synergy we've got going on, we've got to upgrade the plan. Invite businesses and residents, and just get everybody on the same page.
Well, for starters, Closer's now closed, right? I don't think that was envisioned back when the downtown plan was done. The courthouse now sits right in the middle. I mean, Closer, you can't go through it anymore. So just for that reason in itself, we need to kind of revisit and figure out, all right, things have really changed here. But, I mean, all joking aside, I mean, there's a lot of businesses here that are looking to make improvements. But we need to see how we can collaborate so that, because the downtown, there's a lot of it is public space. And so we need to enhance it in addition to what they're trying to do with their buildings.
Thank you for your feedback. We'll start working on the documentation and creating the committee.
Do we have any other comments from council? Nick, would you want to say anything, sir, at this time? I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you and I have talked about things, and I know you're doing a lot of things out there. And you've seen, I think you went with the Chamber to some
And I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and just to kind of echo, I mean, you're hitting it right on the head. You know, the university's had their recent announcements, and, you know, the all-time high of subdivisions going on as well. You know, the quality of life, we feel, has maybe kind of been lagging behind. You know, with all the investments that the city has made, with improving the area, I think that there should be some more private monies that are stepping in. And I think it's just a communication thing. And so, looking forward to being, you know, any assistance on that committee.
We'll probably invite you to be on that board, to be honest. I hope you don't mind, because we would need your input.
Maybe we should get somebody, Mayor, from the school district, from, maybe we should get a representative from the school district, from the county, from UTRGV, all in the committee.
And it's like anything, and I told City Manager, you know, unless, you know, we create something like this, where there's a dedicated effort, it's going to be tough. I mean, the city has, not that it's not important, but it's just a way to stay on task and get to what we're trying to get to. And included, I mean, we're updating the comprehensive plan right now. I don't know if there's a downtown component to it or not, right?
Look at that.
But we ought to add that as part of this and have this committee tie their work to that plan. Because that's, this 2010 plan actually was born out of the last comprehensive plan. You know, everybody felt like, all right, we need to do something about our downtown, and we ended up doing just a downtown plan in itself, right? So we're doing a comprehensive plan right now. We ought to add this as part of what they're trying to do, you know, as well. Yeah, so, but no, but thank you, Nick, and others. I know there's been a lot of improvements out there, and but it's been, I don't want to say this on your own, just like the city on our own. And like you said, we probably need to closer connect, you know, what everybody's trying to do. Because at the end, the idea here, the vision, is to connect our university to our downtown, into our overall community, and capitalize in it being here. I mean, we're proud that the university, that we're a university home to UTRGV. We're proud that we have the county seat, you know, and we just need to make sure we connect everything. And there's some synergy going on right now that we need to all rally around, and I think there's a way to do it.
Definitely, the momentum.
Yeah.
Looking forward to it, thank you.
So we can maybe have an item, council, maybe under future items. We really just want to get going with something. And I think that if everybody's in agreement, maybe at the next meeting, you could present to us some options to appoint this board and have them start meeting, maybe as part of the comprehensive plan.
Yes, definitely, we'll do.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item eight, economic development, which is somewhat related, I think, right? This project, or it's in our downtown and around the area. This is to approve the Edinburgh Economic Development Corporation's facade and lot improvement program. It's going to be known as a FLYP. I don't know if people are going to confuse that with, you know, something different, but it's a program to help storefront facade improvements.
Yeah, so
Well, I'll need to get a motion first, sorry. Is there a motion? Were motions there a second? We have, go ahead, sir.
So the EDC board has been working on trying to come up with a program that would benefit small businesses that are needing to revitalize their parking lots, their landscaping, their facade, their signage, that type of thing. And a lot of it is really kind of a, you know, looking back at the Spark program that was initiated during the COVID era. Is that a lot of people needed to fix up their buildings, and wanted to fix up their buildings. And so the EDC has set aside $400,000, and I'll call it a phase one, to do just that. And this is a grant program that we're going to make available to all small businesses here in Edinburgh. There are some restrictions. The restrictions are all going to be online. The application's going to be online. There's going to be a review process, a scoring system that the board will be participating in. And then a ranking system, so that we have at least 40 businesses that are going to receive up to $10,000 in assistance. If they're not going to spend $10,000, then that allows an opportunity for others to participate as well. So it could be more than 40 businesses in that first phase. But basically, what it is, is if somebody has to repair their parking lot because it has some potholes, if they want to repaint their exterior of their building, if they want to improve their signage or improve their landscaping, then they're going to be eligible to apply for this program. Now, the program, the way it's going to be scored, really kind of depends on how big the business is, how many people it's employing. So the smaller the business, the higher the points. So we're really trying to target the small businesses. If it's a mom and pop, and that's all it is, that's going to score higher than if it's a franchise with, you know, five, 20 employees, or whatever. If it's a national chain, it's not going to be eligible. If it's a corporate-owned store, it has to be locally owned, okay? And so also, we took into account geography. We talked about trying to make sure that the east side is looked at, and certain parts of town are considered. So the way they're being considered is by having more points for downtown, for the east side, and that type of thing, than it would be for other parts of town. And so as the applications come in, we'll start ranking them, and then scoring them. And then the board will get together and identify the 40 recipients or more. But staff has to go through what the proposals are in terms of the projects, and then making sure that that's all flushed out. And then we're going to start this, if approved tonight, on January 8th, so that's a week from, or next Monday. And for 30 days, basically, through February 8th, we will accept the applications. After that, then we'll tally everything up, and then the board will decide what those 40 or more businesses are going to be. And then within those 30 days, staff is going to be really busy making sure that we flush out all the expenses and all the projects themselves. It's been, it's been a lengthy process. I know that Dan, serving on the EDC board, can attest to that.
No, no problem. I appreciate the EDC board coming up with this, you know, program. I think you're right, there's been other programs out there that have helped, but the need is still there. The money ran out, and, you know, the need's still there. And I appreciate you all looking at geographically the areas to focus on. I think that's great. So this is a one-time grant?
It's a one-time grant. And also, if somebody, for example, there's a mom and pop that cannot afford to do the improvements because their cash flow doesn't allow, their financial situation doesn't allow. If they can show us that financial hardship, then the board will consider that. And instead of basically having them pay first and then us reimbursing them, the board will basically pay the vendor.
Okay, you're right. And so what about, do they need to own the building? Because a lot of businesses are leasing, right? And so we've had other programs in the past, so that was an issue, unfortunately, but I'm not sure if that affects anyone or anything.
No, it's not. It doesn't have to be a requirement that they own the building or the property. If the property owner consents to the improvements, then the tenant can apply.
Okay, so they have to consent. I think that's been the issue in the past, unfortunately, yeah. But hopefully, we can work through that to make sure we could
Yeah, a lot of times, the lease agreements allow for them to do certain things, and so we'll have to work through that.
Okay, great. Anybody else have any questions?
Can you help me with the, like, the opportunity zone? Do you know what?
Yeah, the opportunity zone is a federal opportunity zone. So there's federal, there's several census tracts that are opportunity zones.
I guess what I was looking for is something like on Clozner.
Clozner would be
We've got the university, we've got
Clozner would be the
East-West?
Actually, that would be the downtown district.
All of Clozner?
Well, not all of Clozner.
Well, then it switches into Business 281. What about Business 281?
Yeah, I think, I think
Would it fit? I just wonder, is this, we vote on this tonight, this is it?
Well, and no, you bring up a good point, because we just heard a presentation from Mr. Acevedo on the downtown district. And right now, it only includes three or four blocks, south of the courthouse square and then north, I think, where Jaime is here, right? But I guess my point is, that's maybe something to look at, because I agree with you. I mean, if we want to include all of Clozner, that, they just use downtown district, because that's what we have in our UDC.
No, but I just want to see is, I guess when I'm really trying to get at this, and for everybody to know, and I'm talking about the point, the point structure. On the warning ports towards the area that gets improvement, is this, if we vote on this tonight, this is it? Or is this still subject to change?
This is, this is what the board approved, but council can make a recommendation, and I take it back to the board.
I'm not sure how that recommendation would go. I'd like to see something on, because I think we're missing Clozner. I think we're missing Clozner. We've got this, we've got Clozner.
Right.
Which is, I'm going with Clozner to include Business 281 when it transitions over there to Canton.
Right, yeah, and Radel, if you could just speak to this, but I think we also discussed that, it wouldn't have to be specifically to this zone. There's other restaurants that, or businesses that we thought could use this money, has been waiting for this kind of help, have been here historically for a while. Then they could apply, and the board was in consensus that we would help out.
Well, but I think what the chief's bringing up is that
If we approve it, then it's kind of
Well, right now, like, they wouldn't get points. Like, that's what
I'm saying right now, if
On the application, right, the way the points are outlined, there's, like, somebody on South Clozner would not get any points under that category, right? Because it's all in the scoring system, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
But if you all make the recommendation subject to, then I can take it back to the board for that. Because, again, we're taking applications from January 8th to February 8th, and we'll have an EDC board meeting in between, so we can come back and change that.
If you guys can help with it, because I mean, I don't, we haven't done the analyticals like you've guys done here to figure out, this zone gets 10 points, this one deserves 20, to figure out what's fair in the scheme. I don't know if I'm the person to speak exactly right now, is what's fair for, say, somebody at 700 South Clozner, or 1400 South Clozner?
Right.
It would be very similar to downtown district, so I would recommend the 20 points for that.
So they would get points, I guess? It's based on, okay, all right, well, that's, and I don't know, Omar, is that something that, if we highlight Clozner, would that need to go back to the
I'm thinking north, too, so just
Yeah, north and south. Yeah, like something close to Shunier, right, like along
Shunier, all that stuff up there, you've got, you know, those people trying to start out up there in north, on Chapin, up in the Chapin area and all that, so.
So I think ultimately, at this point, there's a baseline program that's been approved by the EDC board. If there are specific areas or concerns that the city council wants to include on that, you may want to provide that feedback to the EDC board somehow. Because ultimately, they're the ones who are going to be implementing this program. If you'd like to, for example, make it more formalized before you approve it, you can make that suggestion.
We could also bring it back.
Oh, but that's
Well, we don't want to delay the, I know, we'd like businesses to start applying, you know. I think the question here is the Clozner area, is there any other area?
I'm looking, I'm really happy with what they've made here on the points opportunity. So if we could just send it back with the caveat that they include something to include, somehow, they figure the point structure that would be
Beyond the downtown district, yeah.
I guess what David's saying is, he wants to see if there's a way we could extend it south, more north.
And north.
Just expand it bigger, you know, because I think the downtown area right now is very minimum, as far as square foot. Are we talking about miles? And trying to attract those businesses down if it goes retrofit with
We can just add a Clozner.
Right, category.
Clozner north, like, you know, yeah, just go Clozner in general.
Clozner from Montecristo down to
You couldn't, you wouldn't do overlap, so anybody that's on Clozner that fit the downtown district, you couldn't double up.
Maybe Canton to the courthouse, or? We could, but I have a question real quick for Radel. So, I mean, basically, anybody can apply for it right now. They just won't get these points.
These extra points.
Right, that's
So it's leaning heavily towards certain areas in terms of trying to rank them. So the last time when, yeah, the last time when we had the Spark program, and this was before I was here, but I asked staff how many applications came in. And there was hundreds in about three days.
Yeah.
So we're going to expect a lot of applications, but the point system will narrow that down into different manageable categories.
Yeah, but I guess where I'm trying to get at is Canton, I mean, Clozner is a very heavily traveled area in our community, very well-used, just like university is. So somehow, I think they've got to be included, something. Now, if we just want to go to Canton to Chapin, and I'm just pulling these out of my head, okay?
Right.
Canton to Chapin along Clozner.
For them to qualify. I don't have a problem with that, but just to be clear, individually, they're being considered, correct? Like, all of them are being
They just don't get any bonus points, so they're not on an even keel with somebody on university.
Right.
And I'm not talking four blocks off, three blocks off of Clozner, talking
Right, it's a whole corridor. I don't have a problem with that. Are you all okay with that? Maybe you can take that back, Radel?
Absolutely.
Correct.
So I would amend my motion to, as discussed, if the attorney likes that one.
You may want to withdraw the original motion and just make a new one.
Withdraw my motion.
Okay.
And then make a motion to, well, it'd be the motion to go back.
Oh, to approve subject to
Subject, okay, approve subject to including the, the Clozner area from Chapin to Canton.
Okay.
As part of the downtown district.
Yeah.
For this, I, for this program, not for every
No problem.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Radel. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have appointments, council. We have a few. Next is Planning and Zoning Commission. We have one member.
I'll make a motion to appoint Rubi Casas.
Second.
We have motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item, we have Public Library Board. We have one member.
Motion to approve Rigney.
Second.
Patricia, there's two Rigneys on here. Patricia Rigney?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have next three members for zoning board of adjustments.
Motion to approve Ponciano Longoria, Michael Aaron Cantu, and Andrew Liel Amayer.
Yeah, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Hold on, I'll second it with discussion.
Go ahead.
So we're going to replace, the three members are here, they're all up for appointments, or even Mark Moran, because I know he's the chair.
Yes, they're for a reappointment.
Because the problem is, if we put Andrew, we're going to remove Mark, and he's the chairman, so he's the one that runs the meeting, so. I don't know if that would be, I don't know if anyone would feel comfortable running the, the actual ZBA board meeting.
Any other, I mean, I, who's the, how many members are on the ZBA?
There's nine.
Nine?
Yes, it's nine. There's five permanent, and then there's four alternates.
Oh, got it. Are all these permanent, the three that are up, or?
Yes, they're members. Yes.
And just to be clear, this has come up before, when you do make the appointments, technically, you have the ability to designate them as either a permanent member or as an alternate.
Oh, got it.
And slotting them as an alternate in a specific order, one through four.
Wasn't there a spot open for an alternate? Or didn't we still have a one spot available for an alternate?
They're all members. The alternates are Sorry, I can't see, it's too small, I don't have my glasses. Okay, so the alternates are Gregory Vasquez, Mark Gonzalez, and Alexandra Okay, so the alternates are Gregory Vasquez, Mark Gonzalez, and Alexandra Rodriguez. Ponciano Longoria, Mark Moran, and Michael Cantu are members. They're not alternates.
What I'm asking, do we have any more alternate spots available?
No.
All right, is there any other discussion? We have, so everybody that's on there right now, they're members, and then we have the alternates, they're all filled right now?
Yes, yes.
All right, any other discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. All is in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Under item 10, Consent Agenda, we have items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, council, and I would ask a motion to approve A through E, excuse me, A, B, C, F, and G, and just remove D and E, just for discussion, please. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So items D, this is the item related to RFP for Do Little Detention Pond, and I get a motion on that to RBM Contractors LLC?
Motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second. I just, for the public and really myself, I had asked for additional information on item D and E related to just the drainage bonds, and I did receive information. I appreciate that. But I, this is part of the bonds, right, in 2018?
Correct. Good evening, Mayor. Happy New Year. Yes, both items, they're part of the 2018 bond election. The Do Little Project is the first construction project out of that, and this is helping the northwest quadrant of veterans and Freddie Gonzalez. So it's upgrading the Freddie Pond, it's providing infrastructure on the adjacent streets on that northwest quadrant. And we're doing it in milestones, so that we try and minimize how much we're impacting the residents. We have one milestone that's very important, which is the intersection of Freddie and Clausner. We're trying to time that one to be in the summer to try and disrupt the schools as least as possible. It is a 540-day project.
I was looking back, apologize, looking back on the timeline here real quick. So on, it says after we award this, and assuming everything gets, you know, obviously built and at cost and everything, there's still going to be a million, 22,578 as a balance on the bond. Is that the overall balance, or is that the balance for, for just this particular?
Just for Do Little Project.
Okay. I didn't realize we had them broken down by quadrants.
There were $20 million that they were actually broken down on per project to make sure that we stay within budget on all of them.
Right. And so on that balance, is that something we could use for another drainage improvement project, or does this still have to be for this area?
So technically, I guess, once we have finalized the projects, or we have assigned the funds, we can use it for our other drainage projects, as long as they're part of the same original $20 million.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion on this item, council? If not, I'll call for a vote. All is in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item E is the other item we took out, council. Is there any motion? This is from the junior detention pond.
To approve.
All right, we have motion in a second. And also, this just, my only question here was, I know, and I appreciate the information provided, this is phase three. Why didn't we include it as part of the original project?
Trying to make sure that the all ends meet. So we bid the original phase, and this was Shunier Street between just west of Monmaca. We upgraded that drainage crossing, which is part of the same drainage area. And then phase two is the detention pond we just completed at the end of last year. And this is phase three, and this actually helps, so we have some ponding water just downstream of the detention pond. This just gets the water out with an additional structure. And we would still leave the balance as shown on the information we sent of 157,000 or so.
All right. All in favor, thank you. All in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That's all for consent, council. Item 11 is a future item requested by council. Is there any items that you would like to request of management at this time?
Not at this time.
I have one item. Myra, if we could, I know that October, November, December is our first quarter for city budget, and I'd like to, I know we get some information on PPAC, but just know where we, where we're at with some of the projects that we approved as of October, see where we're at with some of them.
Yes, sir. We'll do.
So maybe like a quarterly, like an update on the budget?
Like a.
Do we do?
Quarterly report.
Compare side by side, okay.
We'll do a report. I'll call just to get some more information on what information you would like to see.
All right. There's no other items, and item 12 is executive session. Council, is there a motion to convene to executive?
So moved.
We have motion and a second to discuss items A and B. All in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. It is 6:56, and we're now convening to executive session. All right, it is 7:36, and we are now back from executive session. Can I have a motion to reconvene?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Just want the record to reflect that no action was taken on executive session. I believe there's an item that needs action.
Yes, Mayor, based on the discussion, I would recommend for item B in executive session, a motion to ratify EEDC action regarding project aluminum foil on the terms discussed in executive session.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion, a second. All is in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
No other action required from executive session.
No other action, okay. All right, is there any other item?
Yes, I want us to move to go back to the appointments.
Your mic.
Do we need a motion to, oh, this is.
Yeah, if it's to go back to item 9A.
Item 9A? Can I have a motion to go back to that item? Do we need a motion to?
Yes, I'd recommend a motion to reconsider.
Okay, and which item in particular? There's three boards.
I'd like to, on the board zoning board of adjustments.
Okay, so there's a motion, is that a motion? Is there a motion to reconsider the ZBA appointment? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a second. All right, so go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Mark Moran, to appoint Mark Moran, Michael Cantu, and Aaron Lial onto the board.
I don't mean to interrupt you, just real quick. If we could take action on the motion to reconsider, then that'll allow us to go into the item.
Yeah, so we have a motion, a second to reconsider the zoning board of adjustment item under 9A. Is there, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, I'll move to approve Mark Moran, Michael Aaron Cantu, and Andrew Lial onto the zoning board of adjustments.
Lial? Who's Lial?
Or Almaguer.
Oh, okay. All right, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Any other items? If not, I'll call for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All is in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. We're adjourned. It is 7:39.